Good evening, my name is Keith Romano, I like to call this remote meeting the Order. Today is January 26, 2021, time is 7:09 PM. Present tonight is Chairman myself, Keith Romano, Commissioner James Stewart, Commissioner Lois Spence, Commissioner Clark Gingrich. I'm sorry, we gotta say hi, I'm going too fast. Commissioner Stewart is here.
Hi.
Commissioner Spence is here. Commissioner Masaraco. Is he not here?
We haven't seen him yet.
Okay. Commissioner Hall.
Here.
Denise Hollis-Stedler.
Here.
Mrs. Zizinski, our Office Manager.
Here.
Derek Strad, Recording Secretary.
Here.
Tonight's special meeting is the the Notice Certificate of Decision. And are we gonna be okay if Ross is not here?
Yes, you have a courtroom.
Okay, alright, just checking. Alright, so this is for application number IWC 2020-03R, Commercial Site Development or Remediation. This was a public hearing. And now we deliberated at our last meeting. Now we're gonna go over the draft decision. Has everybody had a chance to read this? Alright Commissioner, okay. Does anybody have a go through like I normally do and see if anybody has any comments about this? Commissioner Spence, sorry with you.
Oh no, you shouldn't start with me, end of me.
Oh. Mr. Stewart?
Yeah, I have one question. I've read number two like 10 times and I have no idea what it says. But maybe Barbara could explain it to me, there's too many knots and reasonably and unreasonably and I put it all together, I keep reading it, I'm like, what does that mean?
Okay, that's because we're following the language of the statute, which is not always as clear cut as it should be. But basically, the finding is related to the intervenor not meeting his burden of proving the allegations in the petition that are essentially that the conduct on the property and the proposed project would have the effect of causing unreasonable pollution and/or impairing the air, water, or other resources of the state or destroying the public trust in them. Does that help?
So basically, we're saying the project did not show that it would impair the air, water.
Right, that the evidence in the record does not show, is not sufficient to show that those things would result.
Okay.
Or have resulted already from conduct.
Okay, I'll rely on you that it's clear.
Can we change the wording on that a little bit? So we can still basically follow the statutes, but make it a little bit more succinct? Can I have a suggestion? Is this the time to do that, or do you want to do that later on?
You can do that. I mean, eventually, obviously, there's going to have to be a motion, but you know, it's fine to discuss these things now and then someone will read a motion into the record.
Excuse me, thank you.
What's your suggestion?
My suggestion is only a few changes of words. Commission finds that there is no evidence in the record that demonstrates that the activities that have been gun-tugged and blah, 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 blah. It's just a couple of words that move around, but the rest of it stays the same.
That's fine.
Jim, does that make any sense?
You're taking this down, right?
Yeah, Lois, repeat that again. Commission finds that there
is no evidence.
Is no evidence in the record.
Would you rather say insufficient evidence? In the record that demonstrate?
Record that demonstrates. I don't know if Barbara heard that.
What? Yeah, that's fine.
So now we're sufficient?
That's up to the commission.
Sounds good to me.
I think sufficient.
The record showed that Ross Masaraco joined the meeting at 7:14 PM.
Okay, so is it, "Commission finds that there is no evidence or no significant evidence"? I'm
Insufficient.
Insufficient, maybe?
There is insufficient in the record that the activities blah, 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 blah.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Alright. Well said, with that, Commissioner Stewart.
Sorry, that's it for my comments.
Okay, let's go to Commissioner Gingrich. I'm also you, Commissioner Masaraco. Well, let me ask you first. You've read the, did this, the draft?
Yes.
Okay, any questions? Anything that concerned you?
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Hall?
Okay, I have read the document. And I commend Barbara on its thoroughness. I think it captured all of the points that we discussed earlier in great detail. And I have no comments for change, I accept it as it is.
That's
I have to interject here to say that a lot of this, the credit goes to Denise. We did work together to some degree, but Denise did the lion's share of the work here.
Then I will give credit to Denise. Good job.
Okay, so back to Commissioner Spence.
We have the unfortunate situation that I was an English major in school. And I'm a real wordsmith. And I have a lot of things that I would like to see rearranged. There's a couple of redundancies, a couple of repeats, and some rewording that may make more sense. Now, I'm not sure how best to do that. If anybody has any ideas, I mean, I've got two pages, not two pages of changes, but I changed things on two pages and
I was like, I should put those on the record. So if you, just like when we change minutes, I suggest that you go through the page and the item number just so that we have it on the record.
Right, okay.
Okay, well, why don't we go ahead and just one by one? Just all kind of call it out. And if we all, you know, if no one objects to it, it's just
Okay, I'm just turning up my volume, my kids hear very well. Okay, in the very first, very first paragraph where it says, "Commission finds credible blah, blah", should we put in that Ross D'Oranzo is part of Arcatus and that George Logan is part of REMA? That that's the organization, or is just the name good enough?
I think it's already part of the record, but if anyone else has a comment?
I'm just wondering, from Barbara's point of view, if that's a necessary addition?
I can add those.
Not necessary, it's up to the commission, which way you'd like to do it.
Okay, so for brevity, we won't bother. Next, we will do that one. Okay, page 2 of 4, number 3. "The Commission finds that the application as submitted should have been separated into two separate submissions, not applications. One for remediation, the other one to address blah, blah, blah." We always struggle with that one, okay.
Do you want to change that? I mean, is that okay? I think it's, I think it matters either way, it's not gonna really change the end result, but
It does not change the end result, but we have been struggling with trying to call things by their correct names. We do not have remediation applications, we have remediation submissions.
Yeah, you're right.
So we're trying to be consistent with our naming.
And that's good.
That was my fault.
Just let's a real quick showing, is everybody okay with that change? Okay, let's make that change.
Okay. The next phrase, number 4. "Commission finds that the combination of a development plan and a remediation plan", shouldn't that be part of the previous one? Because it really is the same concept. We said we wanted them separated and then we're explaining why. So should that be part of number 3 instead of being a separate line item?
So almost like a bullet, like I did under 6 and 7 type thing? Is that what you're thinking of?
I don't know if it needs or if you just need to remove the 4 and add it to 3.
Almost like 4 is reasons why 3
Is it continued?
Oh, Keith, you're dropping out again.
Sorry.
There you go.
It seems like 4 is just a reason backing up number 3, reasons, right?
Right, that was my So it doesn't have to be a separate bullet. Okay, and in that same line should be "combination of a development plan and a remediation plan", that was a slight change in wording.
Of plan and remediation plan, okay.
In the same submission.
The site becomes development. Wait.
Correct.
Site becomes development in the first line.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we got rid of, so "Commission finds that the combination of a development plan and remediation plan"
"in the same submission"
Yeah.
"makes it difficult to review since each plan has different timelines and requirements."
Different timelines.
Okay. And the rest of it is the same, so that's part of number 3, right? So that changes next one becomes number 4.
Okay, hold on.
And then alright, number 6, I had a lot of changes too.
Is that the one that starts C-section 11.11?
No, this is number 6, right underneath
Well, the new, it's the new, it's the old 6.
The real 6.
The old 6.
The old 6.
Yeah, the old 6, I'm sorry. Now it's 5.
Right, that's why I asked that question.
I'm sorry, I did not change the numbering as I went down. I probably should have, but I wasn't sure that it was actually gonna happen. Okay. Do we need to say, on the second line, it says, "Details are lacking and there remain too many unanswered questions"? Should we just take out the 2 and just say, "There remain many unanswered questions", or is it immaterial? I mean, it says the same thing, but it just seems wordy.
Well, just keep in mind that I want to read this into the record after we're done with it. So any little like language nuance changes is gonna probably make it a little bit harder, complicated. Can we hear me? No, can you hear me?
Yeah.
We're losing you again. You're dropping out.
So at some point in this meeting, I'm gonna read this whole draft into the record. And if there's any like little nuance do that, so if it's, if it's a not hearing me?
No, you're back again.
You're in and out.
I don't know what's going on.
And you're clear when you're clear.
Mine was the router last time it happened to me.
This could have switched back to the computer microphone rather than the other microphone.
Yeah, that's what it seems like.
It seems like the old problem, so check which microphone GoToMeeting is using.
It says the USB microphone. How's that? You hear me?
Yeah.
Nothing?
No, I can hear you.
Yeah.
I switch it to the other one that's on the list, so we'll see.
It sounds better than all.
Alright, so what I'm saying is that at some point, I'm gonna read this draft into the record. So if it's little like language nuanced things, it's gonna make it a little more difficult. So if it's, you know, unless you think there's really a big matter, an important matter, well, I don't see the difference, I don't see where it's gonna make a difference.
Alright, so we'll skip that one. Um, letter A, under number 5. "Instead of 'no details' on the pumping, I think we should put 'inadequate details', because there were some. So we can't say no, I don't like to deal in superlatives, you know? There's always that chance of having a little bit of something. And if we say none, that's very definitive, so
Agreed.
'Inadequate details' on the well.
Okay.
For instance, capacity, and then I added recovery rate and seasonal changes.
I'm sorry, where was that last thing you just talked about?
That was letter A, under number, what's now 5.
"Inadequate details" on the pumping.
Yeah, change that to "well", because it was the well in question, not the pumping.
Okay, i.e. capacity, recovery rate, and what was the last thing?
Seasonal changes. Um, we ready?
Yes, please.
Okay, number B. "Cross out the pipe length is $1,500". Pipe length is 1,500 feet, I just threw that out as a very rough estimate of what I thought it was. So that's really not a real thing. I would say that we just say inadequate details on construction, installation, and maintenance of the pump and pipe. Did you need to say something, BJ?
I was agreeing with you.
Oh.
This was a good thing.
Thank you.
Insufficient or inadequate details?
Inadequate.
Okay, same as the one above.
Same thing, it doesn't mean inadequate, insufficient, same deal.
Just making sure, because I heard insufficient at one point, that's why I asked.
Okay, good that you did.
Okay.
Um, number C, I would like everybody else's commission on a letter C after that. Um, does that really have anything to do? Alright, wait, my thought was to eliminate letter C and replace it with another letter C. Because that seemed to be meandering around in concept. So what I did is I changed it to say, "Details were missing are incomplete for the following reasons", okay, "details concerning the length of the pipe leading from the well, its apparent placement which appears to cross heavy truck routes, and protection from exposure to freezing and fluctuating temperatures", that was instead of the letter C that they had there. Does anybody agree with that? Does that make more succinct?
I'm in agreement, yeah, I think it gets the same message you crossed.
Yeah, I'm good with that. Yeah, just my only thought here is that, you know, these aren't conditions of approval, the reasons for denial, so you know, I don't know how much you want to really scrutinize all the language because it doesn't really make, you know, little nuances, details are gonna make that much of a difference because they're gonna have to reset a new plan that we get to scrutinize and and have to approve.
Right, agreed.
So, you know, again, do you want to try to get something out that we could, you know, we don't want to overcomplicate it, make it difficult, it is just a denial letter.
Well, I However, I was just thinking that this could be used as a basis as to what else we were looking for in a future application.
Well, it is, it is, but you know, there I think what's gonna happen was that?
Might save us a meeting or two.
Yeah, I think it's not, it's good to have the reason, I'm not saying that, but if it's a matter of, you know, a fancier, better wording, I think they're getting the point. But again, I don't have a problem changing anything.
Okay.
It's just that I don't want to, you know, add more work than is really necessary to do what we're trying to do right now.
Alrighty.
So are we, what are we doing with C then?
That's up to the commission, you know what I'm recommending.
That's why I'm asking the question, because I
Yeah.
I got three words out of that, you talk too fast and I'm not shorthander.
I'm sorry. Well, I have the long word format, I can send it to anybody that needs it.
It's up to hold on for a second, please. Oh, okay. If you want to change it, like I said, I'm not opposed to changing it. I'm not a favorite either, so whatever everybody wants to do, if you want, you know, if you want to change this thing, let's just, everybody just speak up.
I think Keith, that I'm more inclined to agree with you that a lot of wordsmithing is unnecessary to make our point here, I think the just for example, this section about piping, we've had a lot of discussion on the record about it. So a minimum of change would probably be acceptable to get the understanding across and let us move on to the denial.
Okay. Alright, so back to you, Commissioner Spence, the other things that you've seen or that you
I don't understand why we're using section 11.11. That doesn't make sense, I looked it up and that has to do with I just didn't see the pertinence to that, so I was wondering why we're referencing it.
Oh, do I still have, hold on. Hold on.
I've got it right here.
No, I know, I have to get it out, because I
I believe that's supposed to be at the end of what was number 6. There might be a typo there, that it, does it shows in the beginning of number, what was number 7? Could be part of the confusion.
Well, 11.11 is the beginning of the next one, which was 7.
I don't think that's correct, I think it was supposed to be at the end of 6.
Everything else starts with "Commission finds", and this starts with C-section 11, so I think I agree.
It's supposed to be at the end of what was 6, but Denise, if you could read the regulations, so the commission is clear as to whether it applies or not.
Yeah, no, when I see, when I tried to reformat it, it jumped.
Okay, so we take it away from there and put it into the end of 6?
Yeah, it should be at the end, it should be at the end of like G or
Okay.
Because 11.11 talks about an application deemed incomplete by the commission shall be with yeah, okay, yeah, deemed incomplete by the commission shall be withdrawn by the applicant or denied by the commission.
Right, so it just doesn't, it's in the wrong place, that's all.
Yeah, it somehow jumped over when I was reformatting.
Okay. Alright, um I think that in letter A, under number, what is now 6 um, I don't think we need the second sentence there which says, "Commission recognizes that it's close to impossible, blah, 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 blah". All we really need is that, the reason is that two experts reviewed said it only had a 30 to 50% chance of working. So in that respect, I'm just saying eliminate some of that sentence. Because we repeat something very similar later on, too.
I don't see a problem with that.
Picking it out?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I have issues with something being of concern to the commission. I've heard of too many issues at khaki-wick things where they say that when you mention a concern, that's not a real reason to deny something. So if we just take that out, the location of the liner is a reason. And then I've rewritten some of that. "While the use of the liner is likely", like, I also like the word likely, "likely applicable to the remediation, the majority of the liner is located on another property and is likely to be compromised with the sale of the site and/or future site development." Now, I'd be glad to repeat that if you want clarification.
You're saying it's located on another property?
Yeah, it's like, well
On two properties, you mean?
It's located on two properties, so rather than "majority of liner is on four independents".
Okay, because that's when you said, "It's on another property", I was like, whoa.
I was not, I was not careful with that.
I'm thinking in terms of a layman saying, "Well, what do you mean, it's on another property", that's why
I was not, I had it in my mind, why don't, why doesn't everybody understand what I'm talking about? Okay, I don't know a better way to say that then, but I don't think it should span two properties, it should stay on one property only. That was a major sore point of mine.
Majority of liner. It's location on two independent properties.
How about something along the lines, just saying that, you know, the details and location of the liner cause I don't know, was not acceptable to the commission? Just something simple, so they're gonna readdress the liner anyways when they come back.
Well, part of it was the concern that the liner may be compromised because of the ownership, because of a separate ownership. That was one of the actual reasons. Um, I'm not quite sure the best way to say it. I have a suggestion, by the way, we can work through all of this tonight and if, once we've decided that that's what, however we want it worded, I can get this to Donna and we can have it tomorrow and go on the final draft
That's a good point.
Without having to rewrite it tonight, because it's too likely to be. But that is just a suggestion, it'll only take five minutes if we all know what's in it.
That's true.
Or, you know, Lois, if there's going to be a motion made, you could be the one to make the motion and simply read it into the record.
I see, okay. That's how good my notes are. Okay, so what do we want to write about the location of the liner? I just really want to state that it's not all on one property. And that
Well, the part I struggle with that, Lois, is that, you know, there's two pieces of property that are involved here. and if they're saying that they need the liner on both properties to achieve what they're trying to achieve, I mean, how do you not? It's not like, I don't know, I don't see how the logic there.
The logic is that technically, when you have two properties with two addresses, you can easily sell off one property, gone.
But the liner would still be there, it's under the ground, it's in, it's part of the.
But the new owner would not have any responsibility for that liner.
Well, so what if they sold both pieces to two totally different people? Like, it's, it's a transfer of, of a, a rec, of something, I mean, it could be sold multiple times, five times down the line. I mean, I, I don't know if there's, what kind of controls are in place when you have a, you know, this kind of a decision, but ownership, I don't see how that's going to change anything. If someone's going to dig in and destroy it, that's an issue, that would be the depth of coverage and, and, and future development in the area. But I don't see how selling off one of the parcels is going to change, what could you do instead? I mean, you don't want no liner, they're, they want to put in a liner.
Well, there's other ways to do it, and I think that's what, um, that's one of the reasons we're concerned, that we can, they might come up with another way to do it, so.
That's, that's, that's good, too, I mean, there's definitely another option for a different, you know, uh, method or different material, but I don't see how you could say, you want to keep it all on one property.
I think we can.
Well, if it's, so it's not necessary on, on one of them, that it's necessary on the other?
Well, as long as they're establishing watershed, they can establish as much, well, I don't know if this is the time to be discussing this, but, um, they can establish the watershed all on one piece of property, they were talking about revising sightlines, they were talking about, um, all kinds of things like that, so many things are possible, including revision of sightlines. And, um, they offered us one, which, which I didn't really look at, um, I mean, we did look at it, but, um, it was so late in the process. Anyway, there are other options, there are other things that can be done, so I, I don't know how everybody wants me to say this, or should I not say it? Um, it was just a concern of mine.
Yeah, Lois, I don't think you can, I, I agree with Keith that, 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 once they sell a property, the new, the new owner, and I agree, you need something in the record that would protect in the future that liner doesn't get disrupted, don't rip it, digs it and destroys it. And, and maybe in the future, we need some sort of a deed restriction in, in any property that's developed, that the liner be kept intact or repaired as, as required. But I, I don't see how you tell them they can't put a liner where they need one at this point.
Okay. So you want to just leave it the way it is, while the use of the liner is applicable for the remediation, there is concern that the liner may be compromised with future site development.
I think that's, that's good.
All right, well, leave it as it was then, okay.
Is likely in it or out?
Um. Which under applicable?
Yeah, use of the liner is likely applicable?
I guess, I guess, we, we probably don't even need it, I think our expert said that the liner might be a good idea. Does anybody remember that?
I do remember it was an integral part of, you know, of, of restoring the watershed. And I know that there is always a concern that anything that, you know, is underground, whatever it is, can be, you know, destroyed upon future development, or, or damaged, or whatever became, you know, per, per, what's the word, be permeated. So I, I don't know.
But i- is our purpose here to provide a, a solution, a direction, or to basically say that the current plan for the liner is not acceptable? Is it as simple as that?
Basically, reasons why you're denying.
Yeah.
Yeah, these are reasons why we're denying, now, the whole entire plan is a whole, we're saying is unacceptable, because we're not accepting it. So there's definitely going to be details cumulatively that add to the, to the not accepting of the, of the application, if it was one thing, I'm sure we would have resolved it as a, you know, as a condition of approval. So how much detail we get, like telling them the liner was a concern, to me is probably enough, because when they come back, they're going to have to ask us, what about the liner, didn't you like, and we could tell them.
Exactly, that's my point, yeah.
Okay, so do you want to leave that, that except for the word is of concern, I would, I would personally just like to say, to have letter B read, location of liner, colon, while the use of the liner is, is applicable to the remediation, I would just take out there is a concern that and say it may be compromised with future site development. Or we can leave it concerning, I mean, anyway.
I would like to leave as much stuff as drafted right now, unless it really, really is completely off base, or might cause some other confusion.
Okay.
Just to simplify it, I'm not trying to be, and it's not a personal, they just, I want to simplify this thing and get so that I could possibly get this thing, you know, finished tonight. If we have to finish it tomorrow, you know, that's okay, too.
I, I, obviously, it's ultimately up to the commission, but let's not forget that the Commissioner Stewart is not available tomorrow, so.
Right.
That's another reason, I think if it can be resolved tonight, that would be preferable.
I was kind of looking forward to that.
I think we all are.
After all those nights, you, you sat through the public hearings, you don't want to vote?
Not tomorrow.
Okay, so, let's continue. Okay, so, um, the next one is part C, and that's the same, that was why I took out the beginning of one in part A, okay.
So that's, that's.
That stays.
That stays, because we took it out, yep.
Um, let me see. Now we are on, I had to take it out of, page three. Okay, comment A, commission believes the chance of this work and working is not likely. Instead of slight.
Small.
Well, actually.
Slight is kind of, is a kind of a.
One of the things that they taught us in our legal classes that I took in a bazillion khakiwick things, is that they, they like the words likely, or not likely, or very likely, or unlikely. And, um, so that, that's why I've been using that, and the same thing with concerns, that there, there are two words that are kind of kingpins when it comes to, um, to decisions.
Chances, so it's, it's going to be a simple low, uh, it could be are unlikely, unlikely, just pick a word, pick another word, if you don't like slight, just pick something else.
I like it, not likely.
Not likely, okay, okay.
Okay. Right. Prudent and feasible. Prudent and feasible, I'm bouncing back and forth, because I've got one on a different. Commission believes that prudent and feasible alternatives to the remediation plan and derivations, combinations thereof, may exist and should be explored, including but not limited to. I know that was a big mouthful, but that there is, um, there's a not necessarily alternatives that are instead of, but they could be added to, they can be, um, combined with and derived from. So that's why I was, I was putting that, and I don't know if I, if we need that or not, after hearing tonight's conversation.
If, if I could just interject here, I, I don't think you need it, I, I think it's clear, if you say there are prudent feasible alternatives, if there are certain things that you suggest that, that clearly, uh, could be part of, um, the plan that already exists, that's fine. What I would encourage the commission to do, uh, to give guidance to the applicants as much as possible going forward, should they return with a new application, is to look at what is listed here as possible prudent and feasible alternatives and see if you really feel that all of those should be listed, or that there are some that are truly, um, what the majority of the commission feels is best.
Should we list them in order of priority, as how we feel like they would like, how we'd like to see them?
I, I mean, there may, there may be some that you really don't want to see, I mean, you don't, you don't have to keep everything that's on the list, if you, if you feel it all should be there, that's fine, I'm just saying, I think it, rather than wordsmithing, I, I, I think the substance of what is here is more important to decide, so as to give guidance to the applicant as to what you truly would like to see them come back with, if that's possible.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Okay, so then that, so, 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 um, when you said, uh, well, basically, this whole draft is based on things that we were mentioning in the last meeting. So, everything in here has basically been spoken by one commissioner or the other, or another.
But, but that's exactly my point, that what one or two commissioners think is not a majority of the commission, right? I mean, if the applicant comes back with a plan that only one or two commissioners like, then that's probably not going to be approved. So it would be a good idea, to the extent you're able to do so, is to indicate feasible and prudent alternatives that a majority of the commission feels are, are good ideas.
So, okay, so that section is, um, all right, so that's section nine, are we, hello, are you, are you in section nine now?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, I guess what we could do is we could go through each one of these ideas and see if, who likes it, right? So just, if, like, you like it, say you're in favor of it, okay, so we'll start with the first one. Okay, so the first one is, uh, A, intervenor conceptual plan, which was presented during the public hearing on December 16, 2020, and provide that remediation could be completed in a much shorter time period, three years. Are, is everybody in favor of something along those lines? Just that, not, not as a complete plan, but do you like the idea that you just heard, is that something, if that was part of the, the next submission, would you be in favor of that being part of the submission?
Not very possibly for me.
Yeah, yes?
Yes. Can you repeat that again?
So, so, uh, number nine, or the old number nine, A, the intervenor's conceptual plan, which was presented during the public hearing on December 16, 2020, and provided that remediation could be, could be completed in a much shorter time period, three years as, in, in parentheses. So if that was part of a new application, so if that was, that was part of their plan to, to work in this particular idea, would we be in favor of that? So we all, if they raise, show of hands, please. Everybody's in favor, Commissioner Stewart, no?
Yes.
Okay, so we're all in favor if, uh, if point A could be integrated into their next application.
I would just like to add a couple of words to that, and they say, would, because that, the reason it was only going to take three years was that there was much less fill to be brought to the site, and I think that's an important part of this phraseology.
I think that's what they're, they're getting at, but three years, if you want to throw in, with that, less, less fill required, so it would, three years, comma, less fill required. Would, uh, B, an alternative in which the filling of the hole is done to the elevation that was approved in the original application for the Pepper Street Industrial Park I-06-21, and subsequently, IWC-2015-19. If that was part of their next application, would we be, who would be in favor of that, by show of hands? That is for.
I have, I have an addendum to it, though, because the, the problem with that one alternative was that it doesn't do anything to rehydrate the wetlands. If that were used in conjunction, for instance, with the pumping from the well continually, not at the, not, not just for 10 years, but if they pumped forever, that would rehydrate the well, I mean, that would rehydrate the wet, wetlands to a degree, as well as. So, you know, so, yeah, I would be in favor if it was in conjunction with the other part.
Conjunction with the other part, but I just have one comment on that.
What's that?
If, if the I-06-21 and the IWC-2015-19 gave them permission to remove all the watershed that they removed up till now, then what's, what's wrong? What's the violation?
They're not real.
What's that?
Those approvals were not real, we keep basing this on, on a real project.
You're saying that they never had I-06-21 officially, and never had.
That, that was the industrial park, Lois, the I-06.
The industrial park, but not the site work.
No, exactly, and, but, I'm just saying.
It was for the roads and for the detention basins, that, that put any site work on that site.
So I think what this comment is saying is that if they restored, they restored it to what it was supposed to be done, supposed to be done, what was approved. So I don't want you to miss the idea of what this is. This is going back and restoring it to what was allowed, the condition that was allowed to restore it, so, and that is putting back some of, some of the watershed, maybe not all that, I don't know, I wasn't able to. What's that?
The only problem is that doesn't do anything for the, for the wetlands, it does nothing to the wetlands, absolutely nothing.
So then that means that if the approval that was approved, the work that was approved to be done, was known at the time, was going to do this to that, to that wetland.
No, no.
So we're misunderstanding each other.
Yeah.
Misunderstanding each other, if there's a hill that's leading and draining water to a wetland system, and that hill was on the approved plan to remain, but it disappeared. Okay, they took it out anyways. This concept is saying, put back that hill, put back that watershed that was supposed to remain, that you guys took away.
So, but that doesn't necessarily rehydrate the wetlands. Um, that, and that's what this is all about.
This is, it's, 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 it's a concept that is, is about bringing the property, filling it up only until what was approved to be taken away, follow what I'm saying? So if you, if you were, if you're approved to take out 30 feet and you took out 40, put the 10 feet back, go to where you approved it, and we make everything work from there. Because that's 25% less material being brought in, follow what I mean? It's very general terms.
I think, I don't care for that, because I don't think it'll, I don't think it'll do an adequate job, and we just wasted nine months.
So if this was, so if this was, how do you, how, another way to look at this? If they, 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 they had it approved, they wanted to improve this property for development purposes, right, that was very clear, that was their plan, at least what they, at least what the town saw. I don't know what their motives were for what happened, the state ran right now, but they, their initial, their motive was, we want to develop this eventually at some point, and they came in with a plan and said, this is the optimal, every, every developer is going to try to do the best first and hope to get, you know, 75%. every developer is going to try to do the best first and hope to get, you know, 75% of it, right? Or whatever they can get, maybe they get all of it, but they, they're going to show the best possible development plan to maximize the profit. That's, that's what every developer tries to do is maximize the profit on the land. So that would have been taking out a certain amount of material to a certain elevation or whatever grading was there. Now, if you go down an extra 40 feet, right? As you're mining more rock, the sales were good, whatever the reason, you go down an extra 40 feet, why would you come back and say you want to put 60 feet back in and be 20 feet above where your optimal grade was? You follow what I mean?
I know, I, I hear what you're saying and.
So what I'm saying is that could we also do a good job, could they also do a good job restoring the wetlands without putting the whole, bringing everything back in that was taken out? I don't know if that's exactly what it is, but looking at ideas that could reduce the amount of fill and also the timeframe to do this project.
Well, doesn't that kind of go into C, which is an alternative that requires less fill and restores watershed to a lesser degree?
It is also, it also, with, these are our ideas that if, each one of these ideas is something thrown out by a commissioner last meeting that they liked. And if, basically right now, if there's something about this particular item that you do not like for a reason, then we could take it out. But if it has no benefit whatsoever, like if it has no benefit or it can't ever be put into the new plan, then, then it's, then it's a, you know, here's the thing, we got a concise plan from them. This application was a thought out completely, it wasn't like a, well, we're going to do it for five years and we'll figure out how we're going to finish. This was a complete detailed plan for a restoration that they said was going to work. It was 100% complete plan. So if we're going to accept something else, there's got to be some pretty drastic changes to it. Because they can't do anything else. They can't get more rain to fall down on the, the new restored grading and they can't get a, divert a river, they can't do anything else. They showed a plan that in grading and site work kind of work was going to do something, right? And, and we're saying that we want another alternative. So the alternative has to be quite a drastic plan from what they gave us. Cause really, anything that was minor would have been a couple little conditions and we could have had this thing approved. So there's got to be a serious deficiency in this plan for us to be having this conversation about a letter of denial. It can't be a couple little tweaks. Follow what I mean?
I guess so.
Well, I mean, it's, I think it makes sense.
I understand what you say and, and I agree to a degree, but I can't.
But this is again, this is, we're not, we're not giving them a, a, a conditions to approve this thing. We're giving them some ideas and they can look at all these ideas, come up with something completely different and we could also still accept that.
Okay.
All we're doing is throwing, throwing out ideas that would possibly, obviously going to make somebody on this commission happy if they thought of it.
Yeah, I, like I said, I'm, I'm fully in favor if we can come up with another way in addition to, to try to restore the hydrology. If, if, if this would be impossible to, to restore the hydrology, then maybe in conjunction with something else that it could be done and it wouldn't require anywhere near as much build, just build in the hole and do whatever we needed to do there. So yes, that would be fine, but I would just put the caveat for myself and, and the future doesn't have to be in the letter that I would like that in conjunction with something else.
Yeah, we could add, you could add something to this. This is still an open draft. You could add something that you, you know, think, can think of now, it's still, you know, still open. So no, so numbers, well, we all, I think most people agree that if someone could come up with an alternative that, you know, again, these are all about reducing the activity that's needed to restore it. Okay, so the next one is alternative that requires less fill, does not completely, but, and does not completely restore all of wetland number two, watershed number two.
Right.
So is that something that appeals to any commissioners on this? Any, no? Don't like it, do like it, so at least three of us like it.
I would say that in combination with additional wetlands creation.
Mitigation.
Mitig, yes, and mitigation in addition.
Right, then, yes.
We have that in E-I.
Or D.
Or, or D, all right, so, yes, sorry, D, D right next door, so, so.
So are we just getting rid of C then? Cause the commission is not in agreement?
I don't think we need to get rid of it because.
Nothing to get rid of it.
As you said, we could use it as a combination thing.
Okay. Okay, just making sure, cause I saw thumbs up and down and.
Yeah, we're not, again, we're not, this is not, these are things that are, are not set in stone for them to move forward with. These are just their ideas. Their engineer has to take our input and try to come up with a plan that we're going to like or that we think is going to work. It's not really so much about liking, it's about just, you know, believing it's going to work. So these are things that we think could possibly be part of their next application that will help, you know, work. This is our, this is our input back. So D was creation of another onsite wetlands to counteract the loss of the wetlands of vertical pool number two as well as the size of watershed number two. Is that good with everybody? Sounds good. E, per comments of Russ DiRienzo. One, design and implement mitigation plan on the 64 Cambridge Drive property in which the mitigation require far less time and has a significant chance of success than the proposed mediation plan. Now let me just throw this out there as a complete counter, complete opposite of, of what they presented to us. They could come back to us with a plan that is 100 again, 100% mitigation, right? And we would probably accept it. But then that leaves them no place to develop the property, you know, efficient, you know, efficiently. But that is another alternative that we could write in here, 100% mitigation. You don't have to bring any material into the site. Or they have to fill, you know, they can't have, you know, outside of safety. But we know that's not really a feasible alternative for them.
That's not our problem.
Yeah, but they also, you know, they, they don't have to do anything. You know, they don't, if we want them to come to the table, we have to give them something that they could make work. You know, it's, it's, or else why would they do it?
Well, then that's the same thing as just adding it back to the, the, the alternative B.
All I'm just saying is that they can come back with a complete opposite side of the spectrum and ask to do a mitigation project that would also be, we would accept it, right? And all I'm saying is that if they came in and said, look, we're going to recreate all these wetlands that we lost somewhere else on the property, we would say yes, right? We would approve that. We're just letting them know that. We're just, you know, in this comment, we're saying, hey, if you want to do that, we'll, we'll approve it. They're not, but that's what I'm saying, but we could say that. So per, I, no, so E two is provide funding to a conservation group to perform mitigation in another area. This, this is a, this one I think is, is tricky. Because first of all, it would have to be within the town, I would assume. And it would have to be some private property that was, you know, available to turn into a wetlands, right? Is that, is that the way I understand it?
Or to restore somebody's or to mitigate for something else. But that, I would think this should be an absolute last resort.
Yeah. I mean, I guess in a way, if they, if they wanted to, if they wanted to find some low lying land in town that was as big as the affected wetlands on their property and, you know, donate it, convert it to wetlands. I, seems a little far fetched to me, but I guess we would accept it, right?
Maybe.
So I guess. Exactly, of course. I'm just saying, these are, you know, this could be their, if they wanted to, they can come back with this application and we would definitely look at it, you know, favorably.
Consider it, yeah.
Consider it, we'll consider it. We're not going to say, you know, no way or we'll consider it, but. So then number three, hydrate the wetlands by, hydrate the wetlands by pumping of a bedrock well as opposed to filling in the quarry. Now, to me, that sounds like a permanent pump. Pumping water for the rest of known time until our sun becomes a black hole and sucks us in. Barbecues all of us. That already run out of fossil fuels and we can't produce electricity anymore and salt, whatever. But I guess if there was a miraculous way, I mean, if they wanted to set up like a windmill, like they see in the big Texas, you know, cattle ranches that'll spin and pump water out instead of feeding cattle, feed the wetlands. I, I, I don't know, I guess, I guess it's a possibility. I wouldn't say no, but I guess if that was, is that something we would entertain if it was on the, part of the next application?
I would.
Yeah, it'd have to be a component of it. I mean, essentially we've given them eight conceptual alternatives and you would mix and match to get some sort of plan out of that. But we know they're going to go and re-engineer the whole thing anyway.
Well, BJ, Commissioner Hall here, it's, but the wording says as opposed to filling in the quarry. So this is almost saying, now granted, it would not be usable for development if it wasn't filled in. Nobody has a use for a hole that big. But, but you know, it's, it is say opposed, but yeah, okay. So if they wanted to hydrate the wetlands for, till the end of time versus restoring the watershed to do it that way, I guess we would consider that.
I don't think that we actually meant as opposed to filling of the quarry.
Just tell you, these, these are Russ's comments.
These are Russ's comment, yeah, right.
These are Russ's comments, not, not the commission. This is from Russ DiRienzo, our intervene, our reviewer. These were his comments, so.
But didn't he say that he wa, he was fully in favor of filling the hole to grade?
Yes, filling the hole.
And then, you know, then.
But instead of using fill to restore the watershed, to go so high as to fill the watershed, just pump it for forever.
Yeah, that is what he's going to.
I think it's crazy to have a forever pumping system.
I, I, I do too, although, you know, a lot of us require our toilets to flush based on forever pumping systems.
Yeah, but it, you know what, it's, we say forever, but 10 years down the line, then things are going to break and it's going to stop working and no one's going to notice for six months or a year and the poor froggies are going to die and the salamanders are going to crawl in there and dry up and blow away. I think whatever you do, you should have a permanent natural system and if you can't get enough water there for it to function, then you build wetlands somewhere else. I, I wouldn't be against seeing it, but.
Again, it would have to be something we would all agree to is going to work.
How about we just strike the last half, if you strike the last half of the sentence, it just, so you don't say as opposed to filling the quarry.
I agree.
Again, I think, I think what the point here is that you fill the quarry into the safe level, development level, but instead of restoring the hill that shed the water to the wetlands, which brings the whole elevation higher, you know, a forever pump would take its place. So it's actually a combination of two. It is some filling and then pumping, but I think the point is there and I don't think they're going to, you know, I don't think they're going to do that, but.
About if we wanted to do that then, as opposed to the filling of a hole beyond grade?
You could, so you could throw it in there too, that's fine, add that in there.
Okay, now, just so you know, these were verbatim on Russ's report.
Yes. We understand it, but, but again, we would still have to filter it through us.
Oh, now I understand.
We could still take his comment and build off of it and that's what we did. We built it, we built off that.
Well, I thought you were getting rid of something, that's why I'm asking the question.
No, I don't think we're getting rid of anything yet.
No.
Okay.
Cause I don't think anybody thinks that any of these ideas is like completely, you know.
Full proof.
Well, not full proof, but, but any of it is like counterproductive to where we're trying to go.
No, understand.
No single.
What's that?
No single element here is a plan or this is all conceptual alternatives and.
So.
Combinations of several of them to make something.
Any, any of these ideas still requires the, the 500 page manual that goes along with it. So these aren't just, it's, we're not going to take this and condense it into two sentences.
Exactly.
You gotta hold on to that stuff.
Okay, so to point four of Russ DiRienzo, E four, use the clean process fill and rock cuttings onsite to fill the quarry and perform the filling within five years. The remediation plan should have also proposed a mitigation alternative if the remediation plan is not successful. So that sounds good to people?
Yeah, I guess, um, a thought that I just had was that it would be a, another possibility for them to divide the application that they gave us, the submission, whatever you want to call it. Instead of having it go 10 years, if they had provided it one, for instance, for three years and we saw how it went and that was the end of that, of that particular portion of it and then they reapply for the next portion as being determined by the success of the first portion, does that make sense? Just to divide up the project into segments instead of having it one huge lump, which kind of goes into number 11. But that way also we'd know within three or four years whether or not any mitigation was partially successful and.
Yeah, but are they filling, I, I mean, is the plant, I don't remember exactly the phasing, but you know, I think they can't get a full, you can't get a full evaluation until the whole thing is done. Because each little section adds to the watershed. You know, obviously they're not going to be, they're going to, it's going to take them years to fill that hole in to get up to the level where they could start being higher than the wetlands to start shedding water into there. That's why they were pumping for the first, you know, many years, yeah, till they got filled up to that point. So I don't know that that really works. Plus I think it's also bad for the town for a bonding reason. You know, if they get approved for the whole thing, the town gets a bond on the whole thing. You know, if something goes down, now the town's got a way to, to pick up, you know, pick up the pieces. Where if it's only approved for one section and then something goes south or bad, then the town's only got protection for that one section and we're nowhere near where we need to be.
Well, I think one, one of the things that stuck in everybody's craw was the 10 year, was the 10 year plan. And if you're not bringing in a million yard, yards of material, you don't necessarily need a 10 year plan. And if it were chopped down into smaller segments, it would be easier to monitor. It would be easier to judge its success at that time. So that's all I was just suggesting that, that they come in with smaller, instead of individual phases of a large plan, bringing, bring in a sec, a series of smaller plans that are easier to digest.
I, I, I don't see why they can't do that on their next application, you know.
That was just a suggestion for.
But I don't know, but yeah, they could come in with anything they want next time around. But are we going to entertain a plan that doesn't even get to restoring any wetlands yet?
Well, hopefully they'll do that earlier.
Well, again, if, if, if the plan, if the final plan requires enough fill and grading to get watershed, how do you, how do you accept the infancy parts of that without accepting the mature finished plan that finishes it all off? You know, I don't think it's like, I don't think that they're filling this back in the way the mountain was taken out, which was slice at a time. You know, they're going to be bringing it in horizontally, you know, filling it up in layers, you know, based on their, their proposal. So that's why they want to pump for nine years. But, you know, if, if commissioners want to entertain that, I mean, we, it's not that we can't. I don't think, I just don't think it makes a whole lot of sense, but we could certainly, if you want, if you think that would, if anybody else thinks that would be a benefit. if you want, if you think that would, if anybody else thinks that would be a benefit, you could let them know. They already know that you're thinking of it because it's, this is a recorded meeting and they're all watching. So it's almost everything we're talking about. It doesn't really matter if it's in here or not. If they hear us say that something we're in favor of or not in favor of, I'm sure they're taking notes. So, uh, so to 10 was, now first of all, actually Lois, were you, did you have any more comments that you had pre?
I, you finished everything.
But you were done with all the next points, the rest of this letter?
Yep, I'm done with everything.
Uh, 10. So, all right, does anybody other, any other commissioners have anything to add at this point in the discussion? Just, okay, um, does no other, no other guidance or pointers to add to this, uh, to the applicant here? All right, so then what we'll do is while Lois, why don't you read this into the record since you have all the changes? Cause I certainly don't feel comfortable anymore. Cause every other thing I have to add, add this comment, add that comment. So it'd be better, even if it's, like you said, even if it's, it's close, um, we're still, we're going to vote on it, but wait, let me remember, it's been such a long time. Before it gets signed off on, we could, it could still, it could still be ended, right?
It can still be left.
Can it still be edited if like we missed, like if we, if we verbally missed something, it's on the record? Like, and we missed the wording now and we missed a word that was on the record during this, what Lois is going to say, or we reset previously for adjustments. Like if it's just a.
Not if it's something substantive, I mean.
No, no, not substantive, but if it was.
But I, I suggest that somebody make a motion to accept the resolution and read it into the record and then it can be seconded. If there's any further discussion, there can be discussion.
I got it.
And it can be voted on.
So instead of just, instead of reading it out for the record, it could be part of the record as, as a motion.
Correct.
It still has to be read.
So it has to be read, it should be read.
It has to be read. We have to be clear what the commission is voting on.
Okay, all right, well Denise and Donna, I know you've been taking notes if, cause some of the things that I have written in mind did not get officially put in, so.
Do you want me to do the reading?
If you.
I don't think it ma- but no, well, someone has to make a motion first.
Okay, well, I mean, Denise could read the, the resolution into the record and somebody could then make a motion to accept that resolution. I just, it just has to be clear what you're voting on.
No, I understand and whoever has the best chance of, of having all the changes, you know, concise. So Denise, you feel like you've, you've pretty much caught it all?
I think so, because I, you know, hopefully I.
You gotta remember, we gotta remember, everybody here, it's always someone in this room that spoke for a change. So if they're listening for their changes and we don't see it, you know what I mean? Well, pretty much it was all Commissioner Spence, but.
Well, I, sorry, Barbara, can, it, would it be acceptable if, for instance, Denise said something and we remembered or something different and can we change it on the fly? Or does it have to be like words worth it from the beginning?
You can change it as, as long as it's clear when the motion is made exactly what is being voted on.
Okay, all right, so. All right, so then let's have Denise read it into the record with changes.
We need to make the motion first, right?
No, no, she, Barbara just said we don't have to, if Denise wants to read it.
Oh, as I said, she, Denise can read this draft resolution into the record and then a motion could be made to accept it as it was stated.
Okay.
Okay, so then I'm going to start at number one. Commission finds credible the reports and testimony of Rusty Rienzo and George Logan regarding.
Hold on, no.
I would read it from the very beginning.
Yeah, right from the top.
Entire resolution. All the way up at the top, so application number?
Start, I think starting with notice certificate of decision, oh.
Good thing you had something to drink.
Yeah.
Okay, application number I W C dash 2020 dash O three R, file number 1317, commercial site development and remediation. Application type, public hearing. Location of site, 64 Cambridge Drive and 4 Independence Drive. Date of denial, January 26, 2021. Whereas the Monroe Inland Wetlands Commission, here and after referred to as commission, has considered an application by Astor Land Holdings LLC and Spacely Land Holdings LLC, owner applicant, Kevin Solely of Solely Engineering LLC, applicant's representative for the construction of a 2,260 square foot office building and associated, associated grading, drainage and utilities in addition to earthwork activities in order to fill the northern portion of the site and restore former watershed drainage patterns. Wetland creation and significant upland areas of the site are to be restored with enhanced plantings. Whereas the commission received the following application submissions. Town of Monroe Inland Wetland's application received 527 2020. Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection statewide inland wetland and water course activity reporting form received 527 2020. List of a butters within 100 feet received 527 2020. Engineering report titled proposed site development and restoration prepared by Kevin Solely, I'm sorry, prepared by Solely Engineering LLC on 526 2020. Plan set title proposed site development and restoration prepared by Solely Engineering LLC on 526 2020. Exhibits one through 70 as referenced and entered into the record during the public hearing. Whereas upon considering the above listed submission data and respective testimony at duly noticed public hearings, the commission makes the following determinations, findings. One, commission finds credible the reports and testimony of Rusty Rienzo and George Logan regarding the low probability that, that the applicant's remediation plan would be successful. Two, commission finds that there is insufficient evidence in the record that the activities that have been conducted and that are proposed by the applicant on the subject property are reasonably likely to have the effect of unreasonable polluting and are impairing the air, water or other resources of the state or destroying the public trust in them. Three, commission finds that the application as submitted should have been separated into two separate submissions. One for the remediation and the other to address the proposed 2260 square foot building associated with 64 Cambridge Drive. Commission finds that the combination of a development plan and remediation plan in same submission makes it difficult to review since each plan has different timeline, timelines and requirements. Submission has found that other combined applications such as, such as this have resulted in ongoing issues after approval. Four, commission finds that the application was submitted as a result of a violation and remediation work should be applicant's focus prior to site development. Five, commission finds that the application is not complete pursuant to section 7.0 of the Town of Monroe Inland Wetlands Regulations, parentheses of regulations. Details are lacking and there remain too many unanswered questions regarding the proposed remediation work. In particular, the commission does not feel the details associated with the piping and pumping of the water from a well to hydrate wetland and vernal pool number two are complete for the following reasons. A, insufficient details on the well, i.e. capacity, recovery rate, seasonal changes. B, insufficient details on construction, installation and maintenance of pump and pipe. C, it was stated by applicants that the pipe would be both on the ground in areas and buried in others, which is a concern to the commission since the pipe is to meander across the site and would be within the areas of construction and activity. D, location of pipe on the site was not clearly shown. E, the installation of the two inch Schedule 40 PVC wetland rehydration pipe neck, network of the pipe was not proposed presented until the December 9th meeting. The pipe was not shown on any site plans until they reviewed, revised on 12/4/2020. This left inadequate time for the commission, the intervenor and the public to review plan revisions. See section 10.7 of the regulations. F, there are no details on the pipe, pump or installation on plants. G, there is no construction sequencing in reference to the pipe and pump or timeline was for not only when it will be installed, but how and for how long it will be in use. See section 11, 11 of reg.
One comment, there's one thing we got to strike and that is in four, uh, F rather, you can't say that there are no details on the.
Insufficient.
Insufficient details on the pipe, pump and installation. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, okay, that's it.
Okay. No problem, so, um, G ended, um, C section 11, 11 of the regulations. Then we start with six. Commission finds it difficult to ascertain whether the proposed remediation plan to substantially restore the hydrology of the wetland and vernal pool number two is possible for the following reasons. A, two experts review of the plans stated the proposed methodology had only a 30 to 50% chance of working. B, location of liner. While the use of the liner is applicable to the remediation, there is concern that the liner may be compromised with future site development and any work done to restore the hydrology of wetland and vernal pool number two may be lost. C, commission recognizes that, that it is close to impossible to mimic nature, but is concerned with the proposed concept to restore the hydrology of wetland and vernal pool number two. Number seven, commission finds that the remediation plan does not demonstrate that it will adequately hydrate wetland number two post-filling for the following reasons. A, commission believes the chance of this working is not likely based upon expert reports and testimony. B, commission has concerns that the project will take too long for results to potentially be evident. C, commission believes rehydrating wetland number two is very important, but is not comfortable with the plan and the abundant amount of fill required. Eight, commission believes prudent and feasible alternatives may exist to the remediation plan such as, A, the intervenor's conceptual plan, which was presented during the public hearing on December 16, 2020 and provided that remediation could be completed in a much shorter time period, three, three years less fill required. B, an alternative in which the filling of the hole is done to the elevation that was approved in the original application for Pepper Street Industrial Park I O 621 and subsequently to I W C 2015 19. C, an alternative that requires less fill and does not completely restore all of wetlands number two. D, creation of another onsite wetlands to counteract the loss of wetland and vernal pool number two as well as the size of watershed number two. E, per comments of Rusty Rienzo, well, I have to fix something. I, design and implement, implement a mitigation plan on the 64 Cambridge Drive plan in which the mitigation will require far less time and has a significant chance of success than the proposed remediation plan. Double I, provide funding to a conservation group to perform mitigation in another area. Triple I, hydrate the wetlands by pumping of a bedrock well as opposed to filling of quarry. And IV, use the clean process fill and rock cutting onsite to fill the quarry and perform the filling within five years. Remediation plan should also, should have also proposed a mitigation alternative if their mediation plan is not successful. Number nine, commission does not find it acceptable for the conservation easement language to be finalized after the decision. The conservation easement is shown on a plan, but too many details are missing to be filled in post-decision if the commission were to approve the applicant's plan. 10, commission's concerned with the 10 year timeline proposed and that remediation is to take place in years, later years instead of beginning immediately. 11, information was not always submitted five days prior to day of the hearing or reconvening thereof as required by section 9.1.1.1 of the regulations. There were several occasions which information was submitted the day before or even the day of the hearing. This did not allow ample time for the information to be reviewed. See section 10.7 of the regulations. Now therefore, be it resolved based on the above, the commission upon motion by blank and seconded by blank, voted blank in favor, blank in opposition, denied without prejudice, the above reference application. Um, and then it just has everybody's name.
The only thing is to make a motion to accept the resolution as drafted, Barb?
Right. And I did find wanting consistently.
As right into the record, as right into the record.
What's that Denise, what did you find?
I found one in, uh, D, Rusty Rienzo, um, one time I have it small R, one time I have a capital R. So I, I just need to fix it so it's consistent.
Okay. All right, so was that a motion, Commissioner Spence?
Yes, I moved.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stewart. Um, we're going to call this out by name. Commissioner Spence in favor?
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart in favor?
Aye.
Commissioner, uh, Gingrich in favor?
Aye.
Commissioner Masaraco in favor?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall in favor?
Aye.
Chairman also in favor? Uh, this, um, motion passes unanimously. So I guess that's it.
Okay, so I will make these changes and, uh, I guess that will be it.
All right, um, I don't think there's anything else to discuss, so, uh, someone like a, make a motion that's closed a special meeting?
Make a motion to close this special meeting for the night.
Motion, motion by Commissioner Gingrich, second, second by Commissioner Hall, all fair. Uh, special meeting closes at 8:36 PM.